And as we have for the last two meetings, I will read an opening statement due to our unique situations that we're dealing with right now. So, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled February 11th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, the Chairman of the Commission. For tonight, the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by Community Development Director, David DeGroot, City Planner, Jake and Crew, City Attorney, Ron Sandek. I'm also joined, thankfully, by Commissioner John Mead and Commissioner Michael Siffka here in Council Chambers. In adherence to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2021-01 and 2021-03 related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the City of Geneva meetings are now in a combination of in-person and virtual. The aforementioned executive orders limit gatherings to lesser than 50 people or 50% of the overall room capacity. This means that no more than 29 individuals, including the public commission and staff, are allowed in council chambers for all meetings. That being said, the meetings will continue to be virtually accessible to the public and members of the commission, some of which have elected to do so at this meeting. As a requirement of the Open Meeting Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. The meetings will be livestreamed for the public to provide the ability to hear all discussion in real time, testimony and roll call votes of the open meeting in real time. Please visit the city website for details on how to watch the meetings live. Individuals experiencing technical difficulties may email go to admin@genovail.us for assistance. While the public may be limited or restricted from attending meetings in person, individuals wishing to provide public testimony may do so in advance or during the meeting by sending an email to publiccomment@genovail.us. In addition, individuals unable to attend in person due to gathering restrictions may be recognized during the meeting by accessing the meeting via the link provided at the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.genevail.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice requiring public meetings, requiring meeting and public comment rule modification due to COVID-19. Tonight, the commission will review the established record generated from the previous public hearing regarding the Emma's Landing project. This project is requesting annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval and final plan unit development, plan approval to allow the construction of a 45-unit affordable rental town home project. The public hearing for this project was first opened on January 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and was continued at the January 28th meeting. Testimony in the form of questions, comments and documents was provided by the applicant, commission, staff and the public during the two meetings. The public hearing was closed after receiving six and a half hours of testimony and questioning, establishing the public record at the conclusion of the January 28th meeting. The testimony provided, with the testimony provided, the public hearing is closed and the record established. The commission will now deliberate and consider motions for the city council regarding the applicant's request. No further public comments will be accepted as part of the established record for consideration. No further cross-examination will take place between the commission or public and the applicant, as the commission will need to deliberate and formulate the recommendations based on the record that has been established through the public hearing process. I would like the opportunity to take the opportunity to remind the commission and members of the public that the Planning and Zoning Commission has very specific parameters and criteria to consider when reviewing applications and providing recommendations, including this one. The Illinois State statutes and Geneva City Code allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to carry out the following responsibilities, including but not limited to: to prepare and recommend to city council changes in the official plan as may be deemed necessary by the city council or by the Planning and Zoning Commission; to give aid to the officials of the city charged with direction of projects for improvement embraced within the official plan; to further the making of such improvements and to generally promote the realization of the official plan; to hear and make recommendations to city council on applications for special use permits, including planned unit developments; to review and make recommendations to the city council on applications for plat of subdivision affecting land within the corporate limits of the city and in contiguous unincorporated territory outside distant not more than 1.5 miles from such limits of the city; to review and make recommendations to see council on applications for variations; and finally, to review the potential impacts on development that may cause regarding but not limited to traffic, parking, stormwater and land use. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not and will not make recommendations to the city council based on any applicant's procedures for managing residential occupancy, relationships with other businesses or the clientele they may serve. In order to help reduce background noise, I remind all commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the commission. Commission will also need to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers. For example, Stocking, aye, nay or abstain? We're getting better at that, but it's going to... So that concludes my statement, and at this time, Ron Sandek, the city attorney, would like to address the commission.
Just very briefly, to put a finer point on Chairman Stocking's comments in the middle of that prepared speech, it's instructive and important that the commission remember the confines under which they are to transact their business, which is as a planning and zoning commission. Traffic, stormwater, plan design, landscaping, those items are absolutely fair game for questioning and for discussion and deliberation. But matters having to do with credit applications, tenant screenings or operations of the applicant are not within the confines or the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Think of it this way: other apartment units or congregate setting organizations seeking zoning or planning relief from Geneva aren't asked about who they screen or how they screen for tenants, or their credit applications, or their credit scores, or leases. I know the public hearing was wide-ranging and expansive, which is not to be unexpected, frankly, given commentary from citizens that are rightfully concerned about certain issues. However, that is outside and far afield from this Planning and Zoning Commission's terrain and is not germane to the topics at hand. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if anyone wishes to seek guidance, I'm here for that very purpose. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments. Okay, Celeste, please call the roll.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. All right. Roll call. Hallman. Hallman, aye, here, sorry. Evans, Evans here. Matuskill?
Matuskill here.
Mead?
Mead here.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse here.
Slifka?
Slifka here.
And Chairman Stocking?
Stocking's here.
All right, you have a call.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda. Mead.
Slifka second.
Motion made and seconded. Celeste, please call the roll.
All right, for the agenda. Hallman?
Hallman, aye.
Okay. Evans?
Evans, aye.
Matuskill?
Matuskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, aye.
Oh, Rittenhouse, you're having a tough time hearing you.
Rittenhouse, aye.
Thank you.
Got it.
Uh, Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right. Next item is approval of the minutes of our January 28th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2021. Mead.
Slifka second.
Moved and seconded. Celeste, please call the roll.
Hallman?
Hallman, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Matuskill?
Matuskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, aye.
Oh, Rittenhouse, you're having a tough time hearing you.
Rittenhouse, aye.
Thank you.
Got it.
Uh, Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right. Next item is approval of the minutes of our January 28th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2021. Mead.
Slifka second.
Moved and seconded. Celeste, please call the roll.
Hallman?
Hallman, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Uh, Matuskill?
Matuskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right. Thank you, Celeste. All right. And our single item on our agenda here for, as a continuing review and recommendation session, public hearing held on January 14th and January 28th, 2021. Emma's Landing, it's for consideration of annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary and final plat of subdivision and final plan unit development, plan to allow the construction of 45-unit affordable rental town home project. Location is generally located north of Lewis Road and Heritage Court intersection. Many applicant is the Burton Foundation, represented by Tracy Manning. So, I don't know how we wish to proceed on this. We have a very extensive record, obviously. Mr. Commissioner Mead?
Mead here. Mr. President, I am, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I just thought it might be, it might make sense for David to take a moment for those of us who have a chance to pick up a listening. What kind of page is that before? I see, I highlighted what I think's changed, but I think those are all good ads and a lot of them were propagated from the commentary received through the meeting. But that might be a good place to start and then lead into our...
That sounds good. Yes, yes, Commissioner Mead, or, sorry, Commissioner Evans. Ma'am. Ma'am, yes, please talk.
Yeah, we, I know that that was pretty garbled for me. I don't know how it was for...
I can't hear anything.
Oh.
Yes, Mead is very garbled.
Can you hear this?
No.
Put your mask. Need to try another mic. You hear this? Rebecca, you had the same problem?
Can you hear this?
No, it's bad.
Both microphones on.
Yeah, turn that one on. I take my mask off.
This is Celeste. I'm having some issues, I know, with Mead and with Rittenhouse, and I don't know if you...
Hey, Celeste, is this, Celeste, is this any better? Is this any better?
Who's talking?
Okay. I'm gonna take my mask off while I'm speaking. I'm far enough away from everybody.
Okay. That sounds good.
John, please mute your mic. That was getting some background noise. Thank you.
What I had suggested was that before we get into some commissioner discussion, that it might be appropriate for David to highlight what changes and additions they made to the staff report, which I think were pertinent and a lot of them derived from the last two and several hours of public commentary and applicant presentation. So, that's what I had requested.
Yeah. I think the hearing, no objection? All right. David?
Thank you. So, the staff report from the January 14th meeting has been updated and uploaded to the Agenda Center. The bulk of the changes begin on page six, under the Review Comments and Staff Analysis section of the report. Beginning with the subsection Annexation, there's some clarification there that the Planning and Zoning Commission is not required to make a recommendation to the city council on that item. It is part of the bigger picture for this development, but because they're not requesting zoning upon annexation nor proposing an annexation agreement, that does not require review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I wanted to make that clarification. I don't think there were any changes to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment portion of the report. Under the Preliminary/Final Plat of Subdivision on page seven, under Land Uses and Zoning, the first bullet point, there was some additional information provided towards the bottom of the page, addressing density. We heard a lot of discussion about density. So, staff looked at the density of this proposed development, compared it to the surrounding townhome developments in Sterling Manor, and also compared it to other townhome developments that have been approved in the city over the past five years. In that same section, there's a little bit of discussion about the city's affordable housing incentives and how we are encouraging affordable housing development within the city. If they provide at least 15% of the development as affordable, they would be eligible for incentives. And when looking at this project as kind of a larger portion of the Sterling Manor townhomes' development, it would represent approximately 19% of the total townhomes if this project was developed. And that's because only 27 of the 45 units in Emma's Landing would qualify for affordable units under the city's requirements to be eligible for the incentives. Under Project Layout, there were some changes there as well. We heard some concerns during the public hearing regarding the orientation of some of the buildings and the rear of those buildings being visible from Lewis Road. So, there's some clarification there that there's buildings one through four that are kind of oriented in a U shape around a proposed playground. There are six trees that would be planted within that area that would obstruct the visibility of the back of those units. There's also 125-foot buffer between Lewis Road and the subject property and a substantial grade change that would cause further obstruction of the rear of those buildings from Lewis The traffic and parking section on page nine was updated to reflect the testimony that was provided during the January 28th portion of the public hearing, the additional traffic counts that were provided for that, for that meeting and the testimony that was provided. And then the stormwater section was also updated based on the testimony provided at the January 28th portion of the public hearing, clarifying that the city's Public Works Department and Stormwater Consultant, WBK, has reviewed this project, confirmed that it complies with the King County Stormwater Ordinance, confirmed that the runoff from the site would be less than what exists in today's condition. And although there are some drainage issues in the area that the city is currently looking to explore, identify and make recommendations on how to address, this development should not exacerbate any of those conditions. And then on page 11, under the School District and Park District Cash Contributions, there's some additional information provided there regarding, well, first, clarifying that as shown in the land cash worksheet included in the packet, the development is expected to generate 10 students, not 100 students. There was initially a just-the-fact sheet that was, that was posted to the city's website over the summer when the city council considered the sale of the property, that did initially say it was, it was gonna generate 100 students, and that was, that was simply an error of grabbing the total population instead of the student population from that worksheet. So, that has been corrected and contributed to some of the confusion we heard during the public hearing. We also elaborated a bit on how we, how the city arrived at the formulas for generating populations and student populations and the contributions to the districts and what those contributions are to be used for. They are not intended to cover the annual cost of educating a student within the district. And then, within that section, we also heard some testimony during the public hearing that the schools are overwhelmed and cannot accommodate new students. We looked at the enrollment in the schools over the last five years, and in each case they have declined. The district is at 103% of adequacy for funding in 2020, and the district has not expressed any concerns to the city about this development or any other development generating students in the past five years. I believe that was the totality of the changes in the report. And then concluding on the bottom of page 13, that staff recommends approval of the applicant's requests, subject to some conditions shown at the bottom of page 13.
Okay.
Happy to discuss any of that in more detail. Commissioner would like?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, I had some clarification on page three, under item three for Geneva City Council. You had, the ordinance cited, there are ordinance 91-30 and 20-13, 2013-13. I don't, I think that might be an error. Is that, did you mean 2013-37, or is there another ordinance I'm not familiar with?
I'm sorry, the bottom of page?
Well, on page three, item number three, under your July 20, July 13th, 2020 heading, there's two ordinance cited at the bottom of item number three, ordinance 91-30 and 2013-13. I think that's maybe that 20-13-13 is a misprint. Did you mean 2013-37? Or is there another ordinance I'm not familiar with?
I guess I, I'm not sure. Why do we, why do we, oh, yes. You're correct. That should be, that should be 37.
I just thought it was just an error, that's all. I just want to make clear that, I want to make sure there was not another ordinance under consideration, so, thanks for that clarification. On that last point that David mentioned, a school district, there, in my time in the commission, there has been past meetings where both the park district and school district have been in front of us screaming bloody murder on, like, impacts projects would have on their districts. So, that has been, that was something that happened on a fairly regular basis 10-some years ago, and David's absolutely right, that's just, that has not happened recently.
Mead, David, Commissioner Mead. On page 10, we talked a little bit about the landscape and screening, and this is, this is an item in the staff report that you highlight, that the planning commission, if there are any concerns, we can add or encourage us to add any conditions that we may deem appropriate to a proper screening along the north property line, which is along the tracks. I, and that's why I'd raise this just for discussion, I've driven the area a ton, I've driven other areas along the tracks, and it, there's a wide variety of screening between residential properties and these same tracks that go through town. Even in the immediate area in Sterling Manor, there are, if you look between homes, there sometimes there's no screening or whatever. I would be comfortable with some level of screening. And when you say screening, one question, is that all landscape, or could it be combination of landscape and fence? Because if...
I guess, we have typically looked at fencing, a combination of fencing and landscaping. So, if the commission was looking for a solid screen, you can, you can use both of those. If they're looking for a barrier, then we'd be looking more at a fence.
Right.
But the, that section of the subdivision ordinance that's referenced is specifically talking about 10-to-15-foot landscape buffer that the commission may recommend for developments along the railroad tracks.
After driving a number of areas, including Sterling Manor, I particularly don't feel a need for a fence, but if the staff, I would be comfortable putting this on city staff, that is, the final plans were developed and worked on with the applicant, as long as city staff was comfortable with the level of screening along that property line, I would be comfortable with that as well. I think they already mentioned potentially moving a couple of the trees that were wrongly located inside a road right of way to that, to add some additional screening. My personal view would be that I would be fine. We could add a condition if, if the commission felt it was needed, as one of the conditions that the appropriate landscape screening along the north property line, acceptable to city staff, will be developed with the applicant or something to that effect. But just, just throwing that out there, the rest of the commission may feel that that's not even necessary.
No, I have similar concerns on the track. There's gonna be a third rail put in there, so...
True.
I mean, there's gonna be more trains going through that section than there is now.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
Yes.
Certainly, staff is comfortable kind of being the final approval of a landscape plan if that condition were to be added. I would ask for some guidance on, on that condition, though. If it were at a minimum of 10 feet staggered screening or a minimum of six feet tall gaps no more than six feet wide, some kind of parameters for staff to be able to work within, so we can verify that the commission's intent is met.
Yeah. What you just outlined, some of it, highlighting gaps, highlighting minimum height, highlighting some level of density within the 10-foot buffer.
Right.
And I'm, I'm looking at the landscape plan, and I'm assuming it would be along this, it would be outside the property line, right of way, or would be...
It would have to be within the, within the property.
Yeah, they'd have to be in their property.
And right now, there's a thin sliver of lawn between patios and the property line, so you're really talking within a couple of feet of the property line more than likely to stagger some bushes. Right now, there's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine trees from end to end on the north side, and I'm not sure what the distance is there. But adding to that, you're gonna add a couple more trees from the, from the intersection of Emma's, Emma's Way and Lewis. But if you, if you put those in the open spots here and then, and then complemented that with some shrubbery, some dense shrubbery dense enough that it doesn't, you know, it at least makes folk, makes folks think before they walk past that and to the right of way of the railroad. I think that makes sense.
Yeah. I agree. Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, and I would agree with that. You know, obviously, there are a lot of different conditions along the railroad tracks in Geneva. But I think, you know, if we, some of the screening that's kind of in front of the cul-de-sac from the street where there's a mixture of some, you know, taller deciduous trees and lower evergreens, that type of mixture, I think, would, would work well back there.
Yes, Rebecca?
I was just gonna say, that would be helpful too with the noise in the, these trees going back. I live close to a tree, and it is noisy, especially in the winter, it's a bit windy here, so, the more trees, the better for some of that noise.
Any more comments on, on that, that request? I think that's, I think that's a reasonable thing, and...
Would you want something, would you want something further, David? Like, we'd like 60% of the property line covered with landscaping with gaps no more than six to eight feet?
I do. I think some clarity in the motion. If there's going to be a motion to add that condition, and that's the consensus of the commission, I think some, some more detailed parameters would be appreciated. If it's a mixture of deciduous and evergreen landscaping to cover, like you said, 60% staggered gaps no more than 10 feet, or however you want to place that.
Yeah.
That way, we can just verify that the commission's intent was met when the landscape plan is submitted.
Yes, Commissioner Siffka.
David, is, does the city have any other type of standards like that, maybe not for this situation, but that, that talk about trees at certain spacings and types of trees to act as screening?
We do have what we call transitional yard landscaping requirements. I can't cite those to you off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to pull it up here and see if those might be applicable. And that's, that's when you have incompatible uses, is what we call a transitional yard. So, maybe a commercial property next to a residential property would be a transitional yard that requires a little bit more landscaping.
Yeah, a good example of that would be like Geneva Commons, like that new development, Lincoln, of feature that, that, yeah, Lincoln Square, that's, that's got some hefty, that's got a fence and, like, pines back there running the entire length. It's, it's quite extensive.
I'm writing something up to test out on you.
Yeah, you have to have something, though, 'cause in order to make sure they meet the requirement.
How about, and this, I'm looking for the commissioner's feedback. How about, and this, I'm looking for the commissioner's feedback, that we would require a combination, we would require landscape screening acceptable to city staff comprised of a combination of trees and shrubs, providing landscape screen covering between 60 and 65% of the property line length with gaps between plantings of not more than 10 feet.
That's the intent. What, any, any other comments on that? Okay, I think we got that one locked down.
If there's interest, I could just share the transition yard landscaping requirements.
Sure.
So this requires that those setbacks shall be approved with one medium to large shade tree for every 400 square feet of area within the setbacks. 66% of the total trees shall be evergreen trees. Some evergreen trees may replace shade trees at a ratio of two to one. That's, that's pretty much it. There's some exceptions for other zoning districts, but it gives you a quantity per, per square footage within that setback.
Square footage versus what I had written up with linear footage.
Right.
And it's a narrow slot, so I think this, what I brought up might even be more restrictive because it's thinner, so you're, you're not going to, if you have a minimum or maximum spacing of 10 feet, you'll probably end up covering 70, 75%. I'm not sure, I haven't done the math, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, it's such a narrow strip of property, if we require evergreens, are they going to encroach on the patios of the units?
So that leaves, leaves about a 15-foot area where you'd be able to do plantings outside of the patios. So depending on the type of evergreen, certainly, they could encroach onto the patios. But if you were looking for a combination of like arborvitae and shade trees, you could provide some solid screening that way and, and a mix of materials.
And they, they could be placed with deference more towards the property line than the patios, obviously, so that you'd be able to maximize the amount of space. It is facing north, so there won't be any shade provided in any event to the property. So... Do we need to add anything about evergreens, or can we leave that up to acceptable to city staff? I mean, you, you can figure out how much, what percentage of evergreens you'd like, or do you want us to put that in here as well?
Yes, Rebecca, do you want to comment on that?
Just, you know, the comment about the noise, anything that, that can absorb a little noise from those loud trains, I think would be appreciated by the residents. So I don't know if that means strictly evergreens, but I mean, I guess there's a line there between too close to the patios and, you know, how much, if there's a variety that could be, you know, still somewhat manageable but still absorb some noise, I think that would be worth looking at, too.
We could add a combination of trees and shrubs, parentheses, at least 50% evergreens, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we have to, just because it's a tight space, you're going to have to provide some flexibility to staff to work with applicant on that.
Okay, but it sounds like we want to add that condition as a condition.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I think we've got that one pretty much ironed out. Do you want to try out the final language there again?
Oh, final language would be, the condition is landscape screening, acceptable to city staff comprised of a combination of trees and shrubs, at least 50% evergreens, providing landscape screen covering between 60 and 65% of the property line length with gaps between plantings of not more than 10 feet.
Okay. I think that's clear enough. David, you're good with that? Have you got enough guidance?
That would just have to be incorporated into a motion when we get to that stage.
Right, absolutely.
All right, hearing no additional input from the commission, I think we've done that one.
Mr. Chairman, while I have my mask down, maybe I can just finish my, I have some other comments.
Please.
The, the hours of public testimony and conversations with the applicant touched on and had recurring themes around a few topics that are pertinent to our decision that we're charged with at the plan commission level. To that end, I went through notes and comments and wrote some things down about each of the things I thought were pertinent for us to make a decision on, including my opinion on each of them, and thought I'd share that and then give our folks, other folks a chance to weigh in before we move this along. One of the topics that was, a recurring theme was traffic. My commentary to that is the initial traffic study used 2018 data with projections for 2026 provided by CMAP and/or the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Considering the pandemic and result in lower traffic volume, I find this approach acceptable and also note that projections factor in growth due to land development, which one could argue may now be a bit conservative, given that land development may have been slowed or stalled during the pandemic, resulting in actual delayed growth in traffic. After detailed review of the traffic study and firsthand witnessing of a 350-unit multifamily project that was developed a few years ago in St. Charles along Brisher Road and where there was large concern over the amount of traffic and dumping cars from 350 units onto one road, I, I feel the conclusions derived in the subject study that the traffic impact will be minimal in this area are accurate and that the parking is ample to accommodate the needs of the property. I feel traffic and parking impact is acceptable for the proposed project. In reference to that large project from, that's on Brisher, I live in that area and drive it every day, it's almost been a non-event. And if you're familiar with the, the Brisher Lowes intersection, Lowes and Fresh Market, that has always been troublesome and crowded and kind of a well, a crazy intersection, if you would, it's really had no effect. I mean, you, you'll see one or two cars stacked coming out of a 350-unit property at either of the two ingress egress points from time to time, and it's really caused minimal impact to Brisher Road.
I would concur with that. I live in the area as well, I'm on that road every day.
Yep.
And it just, there's never more than one, maybe two cars.
Right, exactly.
Waiting to get on.
And you compare that to a 45-unit property, I think, I think the conclusions reached in the traffic study are accurate in my mind. Second topic was density. At six units per acre, consistent with the maximum allowed under the approved PUD revisions, I feel this density is acceptable. If you look at larger stacked, like stacked flat apartment projects, those are developed in, in the unit, in high teens per acre, sometimes 16 to 20 units per acre. But townhomes take up more land area each and, and by their nature, you'll have a lower per unit count per acre. I worked with and know of a large home builder lender, a national home builder lender, and talked to them recently, and they are developing a, or financing a property that's for rent townhomes in a suburb of Dallas, in a comparable suburb to Geneva, at 6.6 units per acre. And they did an analysis on for sale, and they said that if you were to sell those units, they would sell for about $360,000 per unit, which I would think would be comparable to what you would see townhomes sell, or tell sell for in Geneva. So I think we're looking at apples to apples. I think at the end of the day, six units per acre would be low to medium density for a project of this size. And I'm supportive of the density. Building orientation. There is concern raised that to the orientation of the subject's buildings with some of the rear yards facing Lewis Road and not promoting being part of the community. If you were to put the site and building layout back up on the screen, which I don't think we can do, I think you'd see, as David mentioned earlier, that there are really four interior buildings that have any part, part of their backs, the rear elevations of the building facing Lewis Road. These buildings are offset by the 125-foot bumper, buffer land that's owned by the HOA and the neighboring community. It's got a fire access road, it's got a playground, plus it's about 12 feet raised off of Lewis Road. It would be difficult, if not impossible, to see the backs of those units and anything that's left on a patio or anything else. I think the concern there is that, that they're rear-facing from a visual standpoint is, is not troublesome for me. And I think that this with the playground there and everything else, that will serve as kind of a front door in, in any, in essence. A lot of folks will come there and sit on the benches and the playground and everything else. I'm not, I don't have any concerns over the building, building orientation. I think it was thoughtful and well, well, well put together. Runoff and flood control. This property has a 49.6% coverage versus a 60% that's allowed, providing more permeable spaces than might otherwise be required. The design for the proposed stormwater retention was calculated under current standards versus the standards used in the 1991 design for the area for Sterling Manor, and those are now outdated. After additional testimony, as David also pointed out, it's, it appears as though this will capture and hold the runoff and release it in a slow monitored way into the existing system. And there's some chance, I don't think it'll exacerbate the problem at all, and there's some chance, and, and we won't know until it happens, but it could actually improve the area's runoff. And next would be variances. There are two variances requested. One is a longer cul-de-sac for the subject than is typically allowed. Considering the request is driven in part by the design need to be modified because of the, the access to the subject over the adjacent buffer land was not available, plus the fact that the design incorporates an emergency access road, it makes this acceptable and consistent with other properties in town that have, that have been noted for similar variances to this request. Second variance relates to the shortening of the maximum offset centerline distance for the intersection of Emma's Way and Heritage Court at Lewis Road. Considering what the efforts taken by the developer to, to get those as onset as they possibly could, and the limited amount of traffic that would be coming off of Heritage Court or from this property, I think the potential for any meaningful conflicts in traffic is low, and I'm supportive. Lastly, property values. Given the quality of construction, there was concern raised for the effects of this property on property values. Given the quality of construction, the appropriate density, size, and layout of the subject, and the good maintenance, maintenance that I have seen at two other Burton projects that I've visited, I don't feel that the property will have any meaningful negative effect on neighboring property values, and certainly will prove a better use of the land than the previously anticipated water treatment plant that was planned for this site. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Any other comments on those points, to raise some good ones? Yes, Commissioner Sifka?
Well, I did a similar exercise in what we identified as, as a lot of the common points that were raised throughout the, the last couple of hearings. And to not repeat it, I'm basically in agreement with, with all of John's points, don't have the, some of those personal examples that he cited, but, but, you know, and I would also add, you know, from my perspective, as it relates to the density, I think, you know, functionally, and while the density on the parcel meets the requirements functionally with the, the ponds to the west and the large green space to the, to the front, that it functions like it's less dense. Relating to the building orientation and, and the backs of some buildings facing the road, not uncommon along Lewis Road at all. I mean, it's, the backs of many of those townhomes face the road. These will be farther than, away from the road than most. And I do want to make a, a comment about, about the building designs. I very much like that the buildings are not all the same, the same design. There are multiple designs of, of the buildings. And I think, you know, regarding, regarding the other topics, stormwater and traffic, I don't have, I'm in agreement with John's statements, I really don't, don't really have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I want to commend staff for their update to the, the staff report. I felt that they addressed all of these items quite clearly, and Commissioner Mead and Commissioner Sifka have echoed what staff also has reported, and I agree completely. My conclusion is that this project actually is one of the ones that has less, less troubling aspects among those things that our commission is responsible for than most of the projects that have come through for our review.
All right, thank you. I just, I'd just like to add one other thing. So since 1991, the density was six units an acre, so it's pretty consistent. It's what's been envisioned for this property for a long time. So, you know, as far as the city's plans and the PUDs and the past actions of this commission, it's completely consistent. So it's not an outlier at all. Any other comments, guys? Conditions we want to add? It's your time.
Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for an amendment to the city's adopted comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for parcel 12-08-200-073, from open space to single-family attached residential, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
John, your mic.
Oh, yeah, your mic.
Sorry.
We stated so everybody can hear your motion.
I am sorry, I turned it, turned it off so there wouldn't be any feedback. All right, here we go. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for an amendment to the city's adopted comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for parcel 12-08-200-073, from open space to single-family attached residential, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Moved and seconded. Celeste, please call the roll.
Hey, can I get who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Sifka did.
All right, just want to make sure I get it in here. Hold on, I'm typing away. Okay. Hellman?
Hellman, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rindhouse?
Rindhouse, nay.
I'm sorry, nay or yes?
Nay.
No, okay. Sifka?
Sifka, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Okay, that passes, 6-1.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for preliminary final plat of subdivision approval for a 15-lot subdivision of parcel number 12-8-200-073 to allow for the construction of 45 affordable rental townhome units. In accordance with Section 12-3-1F of the city's subdivision regulations, the applicant is also requesting two variations and exceptions. A, from Section 12-3-2F to increase the maximum allowable cul-de-sac length from 500 feet to 1,136 feet, and B, from Section 12-3-2J to reduce the maximum allowable centerline offset of intersecting right-of-ways from 125 feet to 25 feet, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report, and further subject to the conditions in the staff report on page 13 as follows. report on page 13 as follows. The table of the, number one, the table of the landscape plan shall be revised to state that six trees are required for internal landscaping, and six trees are provided for internal landscaping. Number two, the landscape plan shall be revised to relocate and remove the parkway trees shown on the pavement of Emma's Way near the intersection with Louis Road. No more than two of these three trees may be removed. Number three, an affordable housing agreement in accordance with Section 11-16-7 of the zoning ordinance shall be approved by the city council prior to building permit issuance by the city. Number four, final engineering shall be approved prior to building permit issuance by the city. Number five, a backup special service area shall be established to ensure city has the ability to maintain the detention area in the event it is not properly maintained by the management company. Number six, the applicant shall make a cash contribution of $66,268.13 to the Geneva School District. Number seven, the applicant shall make a cash contribution of $274,725 to the Geneva Park District. And finally, number eight, the landscape screening acceptable to city staff and comprised of a combination of trees and shrubs, at least 50% evergreens, providing landscapes screen covering between 60 and 65% of the property line length with gaps between plantings of not more than 10 feet, shall be incorporated into the design.
Slivka, second.
Okay, hang on. Just don't ask me to repeat it. It was seconded by Slivka. Hold on. Hallman?
Aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, nay.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes 6-1.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a final planned unit development plan approval for alternative Area 4 parcel number 12-08-200-073 of the Sterling Manor planned unit development to allow for the construction of 45 affordable rental townhome units, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slivka, second.
Volcal? Hallman?
Hallman, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, nay.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right, thank you. All right, so, David, next steps, the applicant.
These recommendations will be forwarded to the city council for their review on Monday, February 22nd. That'll be at 7:00 PM.
Okay. All right. I'd like to comment, thank staff for their great work on this project in difficult circumstances, and I think we did a very good job considering what we had to do remotely and so on. We got a good record and really appreciate all the efforts. All right, that concludes this item. Thank you. Yep. All right, so our next item on our agenda is public comment. So if there's any public comment, I think Clayton, you have the, Jayden, you have the remote virtual meeting. Again, if you want to be recognized for a public comment, please raise your hand on the application, and we will be, you will be recognized to speak.
Maybe ask one more time.
Yes, so the item on our agenda is public comment. We always have a public comment section at the, during our hearings on the agenda. If there's anyone in that's attending the session remotely who wishes to speak to the commission, please raise your hand, and you will be recognized to speak. There is no one in the chamber that is here to speak on the matter, so we would do it all virtually.
Commissioner, we do, or Chairman, excuse me, we do have one hand up right now. Mr. Rodney Nelson, if you would like to unmute your mic and proceed with your public comment.
Thank you. I assume you can hear me.
We can.
Good. Thanks very much for your efforts on this. Somebody once wrote that these meetings are a combination of a New England Town Hall meeting and a hog calling contest, and I think you did quite well, but I'm not going to give you the high marks that Mr. Stocking has just given to himself. I'd like to make a little bit of a critique of how this has gone. On the evening of the 28th, I raised my green hand at 7:03. My green hand was still raised when the meeting adjourned at 11:00 PM. I was never called upon to speak. During the meeting, I had an email exchange with staff and a text exchange through the webinar site. I unequivocally stated that I wished to speak. I have many time-stamped screenshots of my raised green hand emoji through the course of this. As the evening wore on, I began to wish I had other hand signals available, but I didn't. But I had hoped to take advantage of my only opportunity to cross-examine the applicant on some issues that I thought were very important. Obviously, I'm not going to get that chance. I was deprived of it. And I have to honestly say, I'm not accepting the fact that it was an accident or that it was a technical issue. After I had had a conversation with staff during the meeting, if I had been instructed to call in on the phone, I would have done so. It was clear to me that it was a decision that was made. So in the spirit of a critique, I won't try to give you any testimony, you've already made your decision, I just want to address one of several things that I hope to address because of its knock-on effects on everything else you talked about in terms of traffic and so forth, density. It's not really the density of the buildings, it's the density of the people. And so you started out with a figure of 100 students. That would cost the school district $2.2 million a year at $22,000 a student. This project went through the whole application process with the state housing authority. No one raised that issue. The school district didn't raise that issue. It clearly was a wildly high number, but not totally impossible. And then we were told that, no, actually, the number was 10. And frankly, I would submit to you that neither number is credible. 45 units designed for families will contain 117 bedrooms. If only 30 of these 45 family units are occupied by couples, that would be 60 people. That would leave 87 bedrooms available for the 40 remaining people that would total 100, which has been presented as the number of residents in this development. Even if you added the 10 children, that still leaves 77 bedrooms unaccounted for. Now, the applicant said they kind of figured two residents per bedroom. That would put the number at about 234. Now, obviously, that would have a much bigger traffic impact than 100. If you can't make an educated guess at the number of people, I don't care how many scientific studies you do about traffic, you're not going to get an accurate number. And I still find it somewhat astonishing that the corrected number wasn't presented until December 31st, just a few weeks before the process went to you. So obviously, I'm very concerned about the biased nature of your process. I'm particularly concerned about the failure to follow the rules of the good general Henry Martin Robert. The other night, on the 28th, a citizen had the floor and was making a statement, and he was shouted down. He was shouted down by another member in attendance. It was a clear violation of Robert's rules. Only the chair can be addressed during the meeting, and only the chair can rule somebody out of order. So you really deprived that person of an opportunity to present his entire thoughts on the subject, and later in the same meeting, you let somebody else basically raise the same issue and expand upon it. So that was inconsistent. It looked like an ambush. And I think I'm not the only one that thought it looked that way. Why would you stop one person from testifying and then let another person testify along the same lines at greater length? So I must say, my own experience of having my Geneva Citizen social media account canceled without any prior notification and being unable to cross-examine the applicant leaves me very unsettled about the process. So I don't think you should be patting yourselves on the back. You should ask yourselves, how can I do better next time? And make sure that these things work the way the actual open meeting statute requires and not make too many concessions to technology.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I apologize for any technical difficulties you may have encountered during the meeting. We tried to accommodate people to the greatest extent that we could. We, it went over two days. We recognized a lot of people. I don't know the total, but we took almost seven hours of testimony. So I'm sorry it didn't work out for you, but you had other avenues to provide input written and otherwise. I know you did provide written input because I read it. Some of the comments you just gave us were, are in the record, so we did read it. So you did get input into the process, maybe not orally, I apologize for that, but, you know, technical difficulties do occur.
So it's your position that the fact that I had a conversation during the meeting indicated that I wanted to speak, that was just a technical difficulty? I mean, I could talk through the webinar, I could text message with staff and indicate that I'd like to speak.
I can't acknowledge exactly what occurred. I just, you know, it's a remote platform. We tried to recognize people. The fact that you weren't recognized, I can't, I can't comment on why that happened. A lot of people did get recognized, and so we know the system was working. Why it didn't work for you, I can't say. Yes, Commissioner Mead?
Mr. Stocking, just, I'm looking back at my old notes. Mr. Nelson, you were the second person that was able to take the floor and have substantial commentary on the first night of the 14th. So I know you did get some, a chance to address the commission, raise your concerns. I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to talk further, but I think you had ample time and ample opportunity, and if there was a, there was no intention to, at all, to quell any commentary.
No, the only, I recall the only testimony that we, that I raised, and only me, nobody on the commission raised it, and when an individual was asking questions that would not allow the applicant to respond. That's not acceptable. You ask a question, the applicant begins to respond to the question, and then you interrupt her. That's not acceptable. That's the only time I raised my voice. That's the only time I've had to get somebody's attention and follow a process to have a hearing so that everybody can hear each other talk. Do you have anything further for us?
No, I was deprived of my opportunity to do that. I agree that I spoke, but I wanted to be able to cross-examine the applicant, and I wanted to do that after I had an opportunity to listen to everybody else's concerns, and I was deprived of that opportunity. You certainly could have called me on the phone, you could have given me a telephone number to call. I was in contact with staff during the meeting, so you obviously didn't make much effort at all.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Chairman, we do have a few other individuals. Lindsay McCall, if you would proceed to unmute yourself, and you may go ahead and give your public comment.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. So I just want to say I'm disappointed in tonight's decision, but I expected it. The fact that there were seven hours of testimony, and you were able to make your decision in less than an hour, goes to show who we're putting first in this decision. As I look at our comprehensive plan that the city, that you have chosen to amend this evening, by the way, it mentions that Geneva is a residential community, and residential areas are among the most important assets. Well, tonight, you chose to side with the developer over the residents that have voiced concerns time and time again. As I go through the comprehensive plan that you chose to amend tonight, I hope you understand that by doing so, you have negated everything in this comprehensive plan, because by amending it, you have set precedent for future developers. So the next time that Shodin comes to you, that some outside developer comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and asks to take over open space, I hope you understand what tonight's decision has done. Because based on the comprehensive plan that I've studied, where it states that we want to encourage the provision of new open spaces through community, particularly within residential neighborhoods, explore open space potential of vacant lots and underused parcels, encourage sites for future parks and green spaces, preserve significant natural environment and open space resources through the city. Tonight, you chose to amend that, so I hope that you know, moving forward, I will be listening to every planning and zoning meeting, and when this comes to the surface again, I will bring this up, that because you chose to do this for the Burton Foundation, you have set precedent that this needs to be done for every developer that comes forward in the future. My second question is, in the agenda packet, it notes that this will be taken in front of the city council on February 22nd. When I look at the master calendar, there are no city council meetings on February 22nd. So can you please confirm with me whether that's a question for Mr. DeGroot, or I don't know who this is directed to? Are you planning on hosting a special city council meeting to potentially push this through ahead of the next city council meeting, which would probably be scheduled for March 1st?
The reason February 22nd was chosen, the city alternates, the city council meets on the first and third Mondays of the month and reserves the second and fourth for items of great public interest or policy discussions. This is clearly an item of great public interest, so they wanted to make sure it was the only item on the agenda, and that's why it'll be scheduled for February 22nd. There's no intent to rush anything through.
So you don't think that, and I apologize, Mr. DeGroot, if I sound rude, but I'm a little heated right now, you don't think that something like this, where we have had seven hours of testimony, that this should potentially wait until March 1st instead of scheduling a special public meeting ahead of what the schedule is? Because as I look at the calendar, I see that we have a meeting scheduled for the 16th, the city council meeting. But now, once again, let's put the Burton Foundation first and get them on the calendar for February 22nd. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I think the city, the residents need time to digest this, and if you really thought on behalf, and you were speaking on behalf of the residents instead of the Burton Foundation, that you would give us time to actually digest what has been proposed tonight.
All right, I think he answered.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry if I sound heated, but it's just a lot to take in when tonight, like I said, in under an hour, we focused about trees. We talked about trees tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Chairman, we do have one more. Scott McLeod, if you would like to go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your public comment.
Yes, thank you. I was present tonight, and I got up and stood out in the atrium and spoke with a gentleman on the, somewhere in the office with David Groot. I apologize, I don't know his exact title, but I stood up and walked out as I was told right up front that there'd be no, no public comment prior to your decision. I apologize for missing the last meeting. I guess I wish I did not. But I do have some concerns. I do have some real concerns, seven of them, to be exact. And to comment on what Ms. McCall had just said, it wasn't an hour, I think it was more like 30 minutes it took for you to deliberate this issue. First, for the record, let me be very clear that I am for affordable housing. I am. I have experience in it. I've been there. I've remodeled these places. I've helped folks break the generational poverty cycle, which I will get to as we go on. But here are some of the questions that I wanted to ask, and I guess this will be more for the aldermen and the City Council. Number one, from the very first meeting, Tracy Manning had said that the value of the surrounding homes typically goes up from the developments they put in. I'm wondering what facts they had to back this statement up. Number two, I have heard that the South Belgian property is one that they are quite proud of, and I'm curious, how long did that project take to complete the build-out? Was it on time? Was it on budget? Were there any lessons learned there for future developments like the one proposed here in Geneva?
Sir, sir, you could certainly ask us these questions, but it's, we've acted on it, and I would suggest.
But I can put it on the record, no?
Well, there is no, well, you guess. I mean, it'll be on the record, but, I mean, again, we've already acted and voted on this decision, so I would suggest strongly to go to council and talk to these points.
Will the City Council read these notes, these comments, or no? When this goes forward on the 22nd, will they read what is spoken now, or is this all wasted time?
You can testify in person, sir, or at least virtually, depending on how the meeting's set up, but there will be public testimony in front of council. They have final say. We only, we're a recommending body. We recommend decisions to council. Council makes final decisions.
What I speak of now will be on record prior to that meeting. Is that true? You let a few other folks prior to me speak. Can I please finish?
We're not recording it. We're not, I mean, it's in, it's in the, it's in the meet, it's in the virtual, you know, YouTube or whatever, but it's not part of the record that's going to City Council. That's already been bundled up and has, will be forwarded to them along with our vote.
Not what I was told when I was in the atrium today.
Yeah, I would, again, it's fine.
Can I ask my questions? I can't make my statements of things that Tracy Manning, the Burton Group, and others have stated that are false? You're cutting me off.
No, I'm just saying is that, it's that you can do that, but we're done with the decision. We've made our decision.
I'd still like to speak if I have the floor.
Very, very well. Go ahead and talk to us.
I really appreciate that. Tracy Manning had also stated, or said, that the building materials are the same quality and/or better than the surrounding neighborhoods. Can you go into more detail on that? I've heard conflicting materials to be used. I'm wondering on the siding and the soffits and the fascia, the brick, the windows and the doors. Prefab brick panels are not high quality. I have full masonry. I don't think that's what Allen and Peppa has proposed. Number four, Mayor Burns and I had several conversations on this development last fall. He asked me at one point if there were to be a committee formed to get community input and involvement, if I would like to participate. I answered yes, but I'm yet to hear from him. I am hopeful I will soon. Maybe I have missed that. Is anyone aware of that committee? Was it formed? Was that just them telling me what I wanted to hear once again? Number five, the property in question has sat as a surplus for several decades. I understand now that in 2013, I believe, it was proposed to be affordable housing, but why is it that the city acted so fast and take the first offer that was given? Actually, not an offer, but an ask for the land to be donated. Why did it change overnight, then? The next meeting, it was going to be purchased literally overnight. Number six, has the city looked into other developers and/or development opportunities for this parcel? We know the answer is no. Only one, the first one that was proposed. Last, I'll end on this. I said this a few meetings ago, that the way to beat the generational poverty cycle is through homeownership, not rentals. There are many published statistics that show this. Can the Burton Foundation provide some statistics that show the success of affordable rental properties versus those that are converting renters to homeowners? Here are a few stats that I'll give you, and I've already given you, and I'll do it one more time, on homeownership. Folks that own their homes are 25% more likely to graduate students from high school, 116% more likely to graduate from college, 12 times wealthier than a renting, renting family after 10 years, and four times less likely to relocate. The result is these residents know their neighbors, they're involved in local schools, neighborhoods are more safe, and the community is more stable, which I think everybody on this, this planning commission and in our community would stand behind. All I'm saying is I support affordable housing. I just think we can do better. I think there are other opportunities, and I do plan to talk to our alderman, hopefully Mayor Burns as well, so that we can do something better here in the future. And I'll leave on this, that as I was at the meeting this evening, the only one at the meeting, I heard Lane Allen and Tracy Manning, you know, talking beforehand, first 20 minutes or so before the meeting, about how the MEPs are ready to go, and the structural plans are close, and I think I heard two weeks they'll be, be ready for this. So it's clearly, this was a go-ahead before, before we got here. John, I commend you for, for listening to your constituents and, and hearing us out and saying, hey, let's, let's wait here and see if we can do better. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak and put this on record, because I do think it's important that we put this down in the notes and let the council hear it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, we did have one other who did have their hand up, so I just want to double-check to make sure if they still want to make their comment. Martin Autominelli, Martin Autominelli, if you, you had your hand raised, if you'd like to make a public comment, please go ahead and put your hand back up, and I will unmute you. Martin, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. First, let me take a minute to say thank you to the commission. It's clear that an awful lot of time and effort has been on this. You've done your homework. I don't necessarily agree with the outcome, or more specifically, aspects of the outcome, but I do respect and appreciate your effort here, so thank you. I have, I'm really seeking a little bit of guidance here, and I'm not sure if you can provide it or not. My first question is, at the beginning of this meeting tonight, Mr. DeGroot was very clear on what was within the scope of consideration for the Planning and Zoning Commission on this topic. And I understand that. However, there are some very real issues that remain unanswered or lack clarity with regard to this project. So those issues that are unanswered, that were not within the scope of your consideration tonight, when and where do those issues get addressed? Is that at the City Council meeting on the 22nd? Okay, should I keep going, or do you want me to pause and let you answer? Or will you not answer?
I would just keep going.
Okay. This would be...
Sir, do you have anything additional to add? I think you were, it sounded like you had another thing to talk about. Are you still there? Might not be there.
Can you not hear me?
Now I can hear you. There you are. Sorry, we lost you there for a second. Sir, please unmute yourself. You're online, you're just, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'll try one more time.
There you are. We got you.
On that issue, several of the, of the remaining questions are related to the residency and the application process for the project. Not within the scope of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but clearly very important issues that should be addressed prior to this going all the way forward. Perhaps we'll address those on the 22nd. I hope so. I personally have found Ms. Manning's responses to these, to this, in this area, cloudy at My other concern is still related to the number of 10 students generated from this project into our school system, which it just defies logic. These are two- and three-bedroom units, so please, you know, again, I'm assuming we will bring those on the 22nd, but it's a very important issue that should be clarified. Finally, something was said earlier tonight that caught my attention, and I wonder if it's possible to clarify it here, or if you could please just direct me to where I could find it on my own, and that is, there was mention made that only 27 of these 45 units would qualify as affordable housing under the Geneva parameters. Could you, could you help me with that? That caught me a little by surprise.
Yeah, well, maybe David Groot, the Community Development Director, will address that.
So 27 of the proposed 45 units would be rented to individuals or families making 60% or less of the area median income. That is the requirement to be eligible for the affordable housing incentives outlined in the zoning ordinance. That is also the requirement for the Illinois Housing Development Authority to consider rental properties affordable. So the remaining units that would be available to those individuals or families making up to 80% of the AMI do not satisfy that criteria.
And therefore would not be counted toward this percentage that Geneva is trying to achieve of affordable housing within the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Do you have anything further?
I do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, I see no other hands raised, maybe...
Okay, I'll make the last call then. So if there's anyone that's currently online who wishes to speak during the public comment period of our agenda, please raise your hand so you can be recognized to speak. Okay, I'm gonna go once, twice. All right, that's the end of that. We're gonna close that item on the agenda. All right. So, I don't know, David, if you have any other additional things?
We don't have any other additional items. We do have some text amendments that we've been working on, that we are preparing for the commission's consideration. It's unlikely those will be ready for the, the next meeting, but hopefully soon after, so we can have, in two weeks, we'll have a night off.
That'd be nice. All right. All right, very good. Mim? Oh, wait a second. John, John?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sorta.
Not great. I don't know what's going on. And I think this is kind of important, what I wanted to share with you guys. I'm, I'm concerned about how this whole three meetings went, and I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand a few things. I came from the zoning side, and when I merged the two groups, the planning commission was setting the amount of lawnmower structure, which I appreciate, and I applaud. The concern we have is, we spend seven and a half hours listening to people, we help fellow neighbors talk about their concerns. And City Attorney, you're right next to him. Were you at the first meeting or just the second?
I think he...
He asked if you were at the first meeting or the second, but he was at both meetings, John.
So, so this is, this is my concern, guys, about the role of what we are to do as bonders. If we're not taking all the feedback from those people that spoke, and those people that wrote in over two hundred pages of comments, if we're not supposed to take that into account, then I think what we do is, we limit what people can say, and our City Attorney basically stops them from talking if it's not on topic with the areas that we're instructed to vote on. My point being, at 5:00 today, I got more comments from our seat. We hear those. I emailed David and Shane a very specific question that I personally think is pretty funny, because it was asked several times. Does Ms. Manning have a conflict of interest? I asked it. She told me no. But then more comments come in, this one saying that they're monkey. I happy all of you guys. And to be honest with you, I don't know the proper word for it, no. Hey, I'm like, I'm really, really busy. But the problem is, is Shane responded to me. He didn't respond to you other guys. You're sure. And that concerns me. It concerns me that we don't know the simple fact, is there any conflict of interest? And the reason why I bring that up is, our City Attorney tells us if we're wrong, we don't vote, though they just don't talk about the operations side of things. Let's not be directed, guys. Well, then who says it? And that's my concern. If it's not undirected, then don't have seven and a half hours to talk about it. If it is undirected, then we should be able to talk about it, though we're instructed tonight not to talk about it. And that concerns me. Now, this is the second time this has happened. The first time it happened was with the pot issue, where we sat in that courtroom and we listened to people all along, people reading books and chapters about how bad drug use was. I mean, it drove me a little crazy, because the past seven and a half months, we should be going on for ten hours. And my only concern, and I say this with all due respect, is I just want to understand, and I apologize for my ignorance, I just want to understand, if people bring up issues, but we can't discuss those issues in our final determination, then they should be brought up. That's my thing. They need to put some kind of barrier in place or a label. But I've been in two social situations in the past month where people have said to me, the planning and zoning department wants, knowing that I'm on the planning and zoning mission. And I wasn't about to say, yeah, I'm on the planning and zoning mission, but I asked the question, why? And they said, well, because they're going to make a decision. They're saying, no, the City Council is going to make a decision. You're just volunteers, you're not all the data, being a sounding board between the public and the City Council. Guys, I'm just, I'm really concerned. I mean, the vote is going to go through, but just a simple principle of how I am, I'm agreeing with both of you, because I feel that we should talk more about these other issues that were brought up. That's my thought. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
Okay, so, John, that was a lot, and I appreciate your...
Okay, so, John, that was a lot, and I appreciate your frustration. There's a couple things here, unfortunately, that conflict. The obligation of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to conduct public hearings. Those are evidentiary. They're required under Illinois law before a matter can be brought before the city council. It is difficult to tell people what not to say. And public hearings typically bring out the best and the worst of people when it comes to matters that are next door to them. Telling people you can't talk about credit, or apartment dwellers, and, you know, people coming in from the city, and some of the things that were unfortunately brought out during that process, only makes people suspicious that you're trying to quell commentary and free debate, and as a government, we can't tell people what not to say. We can ask them politely to stay within the confines of the zoning and planning mission, which is land use, traffic, stormwater, things like that. But sometimes, that type of mundane discussion isn't as interesting as talking about other topics. And there's no question that a lot of other topics were broached. But if we had cut off those discussions, I don't think it's reasonable to assume that would have quelled people's intentions. I think it would have heightened the animosity. So it is better to let people say their piece, and then remind the commission what the commission's job is. And respectfully, someone that rents from developer A versus developer B is not, frankly, fair commentary with respect to fair housing as a general concept. No one would have asked this if this were a fancy apartment unit that we're renting out at $3,000 or $4,000 per month. They would have assumed the landowner knows how to do their own credit checks and run their business accordingly. That isn't fair commentary for affordable housing. It's discriminatory type of language. It is verboten, and frankly, illegal. That's why we did not permit it with respect to the deliberative process of this tribunal. People can make comments, because that's their free right and free speech rights. This tribunal does not have to take those commentary and comments into consideration, and in fact, are duty-bound not to. So I absolutely agree with you. It is frustrating, difficult to go through seven hours of commentary and questioning, and sometimes repetitive questioning. That is the lot of a public entity.
Ron, I agree with you, and I hope that we're having a positive conversation here.
Sure.
What I'm talking about is reserve conflict of interest. In the warrants of multimillion-dollar builder, Kim Joyner, I hope you mean that's the same thing. I hope you mean that's the same thing, that if a multimillion-dollar...
The conflict of interest is what, John?
Conflict of interest is, does her husband have invested interest in the possibility of that business after she told on her own that he did not?
Okay, well, I don't know how that's a, I mean, you might take issue with her answer.
Because we did get more information this afternoon, where people were sending something from the Better Business Bureau, from the Illinois Secretary of State, where her husband was listed as other title, other than a product manager. It was simply wanted to know, can we find out, and start a cloud with the interests? You clearly made that clear, the structure prior to us waiting, that, hey, operations is not going to be discussed. And I get it, Ron, I get it, so we don't discuss it. But then, we need to sit there, or someone needs to sit there, in this public commentary, just like what you said, hey, credit's off the table. You didn't ask about credit. That's the true authority. Well, he asked about the lady's husband, what he does, because that's none of our business. If you wouldn't ask that question, go to the city council meeting, and you can ask that much to all of you.
I hear you. I don't know if that would have satisfied anyone, and given that there was some discussion about it, I, you know, look, people can disagree over whether she handled that question or other questions well. That is really for the eye of the beholder. I don't know if there is, you know, I haven't seen anything, John, that lets me, that worries me in the least, that there is any type of impropriety. But I'm, and look, if something's untoward, as the city attorney, I will look at it and I will investigate it. I'm happy to. That's my job.
That was, I guess that's my point, is, we shouldn't be dealing with those kind of issues, which are issues...
There were a whole bunch that we shouldn't have been addressed with. Actually, John, that was my point. That's just one. I could list a litany of comments that were incendiary, offensive, mean spirited, et cetera. Unfortunately, hear me out, please. Just hear me out, and then I will listen. The point is, we can't squelch free speech and try and put parameters around people's commentary. It just isn't the right way.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, if you are giving time, you're sending email, counting everybody on the email. Maybe I wasn't smart enough to not count everybody, but I counted everybody. And I asked the question, based on letter section in at five minutes this afternoon, in the Secretary of State, in the Business Bureau, if all I wanted to know in the city was, have you guys done the digital things to find out, is there a conflict of interest? Is there any, do you have to verify this? Two hours fired for our meeting time. And the simple fact that we get in in five minutes, you say, hey, guys, we're not supposed to talk about the operational side of this, that's not even relevant. You weren't like, Ron, I told you, hey, John, don't win it up. And it's not something that should be discussed, which I'm fine with, but it's, to me, it's just, it's kind of like, I don't know, it's kind of like, it's like, yeah, we can listen to all this, but we can't accept them as real. And that's never been the case. We've always discussed issues. On the hot issue, we discussed it amongst the room for a long time, because we came to a meeting.
I don't know what to say about the last part there. I have no, I can't give you any commentary on the last part of your comment, other than, the law is pretty clear on what it is planning and zoning boards can do and should do. And my job is to help guide that, and stay out of hot areas of potential liability and trouble. That's what I'm supposed to do, John.
I get it. I just, I apologize, I'm not leading myself here. I just, I think that, you know, on top of, in every, right, I spent over four hours reading the interests, on top of the nine hours of participating. I mean, there's a lot at hand here. I just sort of feel, there's a volunteer in the planning zone mission, a lot of the stuff that was said, had nothing to do with us, nothing.
True. Absolutely true.
We say, as a commission, we need to do a better job, and I don't want to answer that statement, but we need to do a better job of figuring out, okay, if we have a hot topic, if we know we have a hot topic, how do we approach this? And how do we say, hey, the city council, we have a final decision, we're just a volunteer board that are to vote on these three variances. It's all to vote on.
But, John, there's a second part to it, too. There's the actual testimony, you know, and then everything that's submitted into their record. And council has all that material. So they've heard all these comments, and they'll hear them again in front of, you know, in front of their body. So, I mean, again, I think we've had this conversation before, like, when you first joined the commission. It is, it is a frustrating aspect, I'd say, to some degree, frustrating, but it's our role. We have to allow the public to come in and talk. I try to keep it within certain confines. They can't be abrasive. They can't, they can't talk over people. They, if they come into things that are just totally not germane at all, like social media comments and stuff, that's, that we put the damper on. But them commenting that, you know, they're concerned about who might live in the development, some of the financial arrangements and stuff, and the suitability of the developer, that's out of our preview. We just, we cannot indulge into that.
So, I completely agree with you. The only topic that I felt I would have liked to have brought up tonight, that I don't feel comfortable bringing up, because it's so much, it's not, you can't talk about the operational side. It's the simple fact of the conflict of interest that I thought was there.
Well, again, you know, I'm sorry, John, but then, again, this, you know, we have a, we have a very, it's very clear in state law what our, what our area of expertise is, and what our, what our recommendation range is to council, and we provide a valuable service to them, to council. We air a lot of this stuff out in detail. I mean, they're definitely gonna get it. So, we do a good function. It's, sometimes it's hard work. I mean, it's, but, but it's valuable. Council does appreciate it. I've had, I've had aldermen come to me and say, you know, we really appreciate you putting in the time and doing the work, because it helps them out. It helps them go through their deliberation process. That's our role. Council has final decision. Any other comments from the commissioner? It's been... That's like our, that's like our usual, we can't go through a meeting without a question like that. We just can't. David?
I don't know.
And that is a truthful statement.
It is a truthful statement. I know we were working through some electrical issues. I don't know if weather impacted those improvements or not, but that's my understanding of where we are. But otherwise, I mean, we're pretty much waiting on a final inspection.
There you go.
One of the letters that came in today mentioned something about a hole in front of the store, and so I was just curious. I haven't been over there in a while, but, so I don't think the sidewalk's all dug up again or something.
I think that was, that's related to the electrical improvement.
Normal course of business.
It's a construction site. Mim?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, we're gonna need a roll call vote on this? Yes. Celeste, are you still with us? Hopefully you are, otherwise I'm gonna have to do it.
Thinking you're doing it.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Haven't gone anywhere. Who's second there?
Please do the roll call for closing the public, or closing the meeting.
I'll second it. Mead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mead. You ready?
Ready.
Hallman.
Hallman, aye.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Metascale.
Metascale, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
And Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
All right, they're passes.
All right, thank you.
Eight forty-five.
Appreciate your time, everybody. Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Stay warm.
Yep.
Have a good weekend.